You know what I'm saying? First, I thought they were fruit flies when I saw some, but they're not. I know. Right, they come, and flowers do have some that come out of the flowers, so.
You and I gonna have a talk. You and I gonna have a meeting, a one-on-one.
This week, yeah. Yeah, we need to talk. Yes.
We were talking to each other, that's all.
Gotcha.
What are minutes? You know, Mr. Minutes? They were the first, like this, first thing, second thing on your packet. The minutes, when you got your packet. He just handed me another bunch of stuff. It's your packet. Yeah, now, am I the only one, everybody thinking I'm crazy? Just hand it. She can keep it down there. No, they gotta be here somewhere. There they are. September tenth. All this stuff everywhere. Oh, don't tell me I left my phone. Yes, I did. Crap. I pray I left it. At my office.
Clipboard on the corner. Thank you.
I know. You got your phone on you? Yeah, let me call my office. I, I, I want to mention my office. My office. Six ten.
Okay, so much going on.
I just want to find my phone in there somewhere.
Sheets, the, the extra sheets with the letters from them and all of that, I had.
Yeah, can you ask? You know, call the office and ask Lai to check, check around for my phone. That's too.
No, you gave it to me.
I always do this. Can you check around for my phone in there somewhere?
Did they find it? Oh, they're just now looking.
I don't know, hopefully it's in there. I thought, I keep putting it down. Relate.
Yeah, I know, but Kim went to run something off.
Oh, she left.
Okay, okay, so we can get started.
When you're coming in Saturday?
All right. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for October the eighth, twenty twenty-five. It is now two oh six. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Susan Dennis.
Present.
Leola Williams.
Here.
Eartha Banks.
Present.
Shirlene Laws.
Present.
Annette Piot.
Present.
Since we have a quorum present. Um, are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Can I get approval of the September tenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes? Moved that the minutes be approved, with any necessary corrections.
Check it.
Okay, it has been moved, and second, are there any questions or comments in reference to the minutes? Hearing none. Can I, uh? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. New business, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Fritz, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
We have two items on the new business list today. We have a sketch plan to go first. Uh, it's a proposed athletic complex for the school district. And then we have the first review of Grace Manor Homes, which we reviewed in August. And just so everybody's aware of, most everybody here is familiar with the process, what I will do is go through the planning review letter.
Thank you.
Have the applicant come up and make any presentations or ask any questions or clarifications, thank you. And then the city engineer will come up, the third person, and then there will be time for a public comment after that. So let's begin with the sketch plan that we have. And again, a sketch plan is an informal submittal. There's no formal action taken on the sketch plan. And this is something that we encourage in the city because we like to give a pre, get a preview of a project and also give, um, hopefully some sound advice to the applicants as they try to move through the land development process. So this first sketch plan is the proposed athletic complex for the Chester Upland School District. It's at eleven hundred West Tenth Street. It's located in the Conservation Zoning District. And the proposal is the reconstruction and expansion of the existing sports stadium and the construction of an athletic training facility, a new entrance gate, a new concession stand, and restrooms, um, among some other site improvements. Just for everybody's sake, the red dot on this image shows the location of the complex in the Conservation Zoning District. And just to remind you that the, the intent of the Conservation Zoning District is to allow low-intensity development in areas of sensitive natural features, but it's also to allow things such as public parks, um, and other amenities that are not suitable for private development, such as institutions like schools and school facilities. Here's an aerial image of the site. The white dash line represents the rough property boundaries. As you know, this is on the STEM Academy at Showalter Campus at West Tenth Street. Softball field is to the south, Lamoken Street is to the west. There's thirteen homes facing Concord Avenue, located east of the, the track, if you will. And then there is off-street parking for the existing athletic field, which is on the west side of Lamoken Street, directly across from the project site. Just for reference, including for the applicant, I've got a couple photographs from the street. Here's an image of the current, uh, grandstands, if you will. It's on Lamoken Street. Here's a view from Concord Ave to the south, looking at the track and the grandstands and the scoreboard and the school in the background. And then we have the sketch plan, um, which identifies where the training facility will be, which is at the si, south side of this image. And then the new entrance, um, plaza area, if you will, where the concession stand, the entrance gate, and some other new buildings will be located, in addition to a new track, which goes from six lanes to eight lanes, and new grandstands, including a primary grandstand and, uh, some visitor stands as well. You have my letter that's dated, September thirtieth. I highlighted a couple things in that letter, I'm just gonna quickly go through those to reiterate them. Uh, one is that this use is allowed in the CN zoning district. Two, in relationship to dimensional requirements of the CN district, it appears that they may not be meeting the maximum amount of impervious surface coverage allowed. That's something hopefully the, the applicant can clarify. Just for reference, the maximum impervious coverage allowed is twenty percent. I'm gonna clarify just, or I'm gonna ask, or I'm gonna present just some things that we saw, some potential issues or some clarifications that we requested. So I'm jumping down to my comment five, where we asked the applicant if the proposed development will increase the total number of seats. And by that count, they should tell us if there is an increase, because that may impact the number of parking spaces, uh, required. We also indicate that the land, land development plan, if it comes before us, should identify all ADA compliant parking spaces. And we're even suggested that maybe some ADA compliant parking spaces be located on the east side of Lamoken Street, closer to the stadium. Like most of our plans, we requested a fire truck turning radius template be part of a land development plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about what the Fire Marshal memo said as well. We mentioned that street trees should be required, or are required, and a land development plan should confirm the location of street trees. And then a land development plan, again, if it comes before us, should also confirm the location of any proposed garbage dumpsters and the type of enclosure that will be around them. And then, just like my typical letter, we had some general comments, uh, planning comments. One was to consider installing a bike rack, um, for bicycle users that visit the stadium. Clarifying the plans, whether a press box is included in the proposed home grandstand design. Consider adding sidewalks to the baseball field, which is east of the stadium, um, to enhance pedestrian access and connectivity to that baseball field. Uh, make sure the new seating stands are designed to meet ADA accessibility requirements, so that's mostly just accommodating ramps in those stands, and that's pretty typical of any new grandstands. We encourage the applicant to consider using permeable pavers, maybe in that plaza area where the concession stand is going, the entrance gate is located, and, um, and some of the other facilities like the restrooms. And then finally, we encourage the applicant to consider areas for, um, field events like jumping and throwing and field, other field events, uh, with, within the facility or on the outside, just so that's planned for, which I'm assuming it will be, but we just want to make sure that that's considered. What I'd like to do is also just highlight the items that were from the Fire Marshal, which you guys just got a copy of today. There's a memo from the Fire Marshal Office dated October third, and they had some items for the applicant to consider, and let me just highlight the five of them. One, being that any new building associated with the stadium improvements may require sprinkler systems. And the applicant should just be aware of that, especially if the concession stand, uh, has any cooking equipment, that may need some additional fire suppression systems as well. We mentioned having a fire truck turning template, but we also, the Fire Marshal Office wanted to make sure that areas where fire truck turning conflicts with parked vehicles should be clarified on any plans. And where these conflicts would possibly occur, they should be designated as no parking to make sure emergency access is available. And then two other items, one was just that additional fire hydrants may be needed in the vicinity of the stadium, just to ensure sufficient water supply for fire suppression. And that would just also need discussion with the Chester Water Authority. And then lastly, uh, just that the land development plan should show how emergency service vehicles, including ambulances, can enter and navigate the stadium grounds for any kind of rapid response need. And also even for staging for ambulances, which you typically see at, at sporting events. Now, the only other thing I'd want to point out, that I'm hoping the, um, applicant can clarify, and it may be in the city engineer's letter, is just the size of the property. Um, and this would impact the impervious surface coverage quantity, because we believe the parcel size is this roughly thirty acres that's enclosed by that dashed white line in this image. If it isn't, then we would like to know more from the applicant if it's a smaller set of boundaries around the stadium. Does anybody have any questions from me regarding planning and zoning department letter or the Fire Marshal Office memo that I just highlighted?
Can you put back the total acreage?
Yeah, the aerial photograph?
Yes, the aerial. And so, okay, so this is part of Showalter's.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, please.
Okay, so this is part of Showalter also, so they're, both of them are occupying this, these areas.
That's our understanding. Again, the applicant may need to, sorry, but, but this is part of the Chester Upland School District property.
Right, right, right. I went to Showalter, so that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So, uh, this is all, this is all they have to work with, that's what I'm looking at.
Correct.
All they have to work with.
Right.
Okay, just checking to make sure.
Yep, and obviously the, the site that we're looking specifically is the track area.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I did have a sh, any question I can ask right now, right?
Unless you want it, the applicant to come up and make a presentation, then you could ask them to.
No, I wanted to ask us this.
Okay.
Shade, uh, the shade tree. Uh, I'm for shade trees, but I think we have to be careful because they don't have that much land. And I've, uh, seen different athletic fields, and they just have shade trees in certain sections. I just don't want to box them out of being able to use some of the land. So is, uh, the shade tree commission taking into consideration that they have just that parcel to work with? Uh, and if they're not, I'm hoping that they do that.
Uh, we can have the shade tree look at it, we didn't actually have them look at it for this time sketch plan. If it does come to us formally, we'll have the shade tree commission make comments on location and species, et cetera. One reason I didn't give it to the shade tree commission was we didn't have any plantings proposed. They really didn't have anything to do with it. But just reminder too, that, as I mentioned in the letter, that street trees would be required as part of this. As a par, as a formal land development, we would require that.
And that will be located where, along the white perimeter? Or?
That's a good question. I mean, at a minimum, it would be at the front edge of that stadium. So you'd have, let's just say, the corner of Lamoken, which is the distance of the track or the stadium, and then possibly on Concord Ave. That would probably need to be discussed with the applicant going forward, but that's a, that's a good comment.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right. So if we can have the applicant?
Yeah.
And state your name and your address. Thank you.
Uh, good, good afternoon. Uh, my name's Mike Alante, um, my address is at, uh, three thirty-four West Front Street, Media, PA. I'm the owner of MG Engineering Associates, I'm also the Chester Upland School District Engineer. I have with me Rodney Robertson, the Chester Upland School District Facilities Director. Director Bell, uh, was unable to make it today, was feeling a little under the weather. Um, so he was gonna come and also discuss the project, but I think, you know, this is a sketch plan submission, so I think the point of this is really just to present this to the board, get some feedback as we start working into more detailed design plans. I, and if you'd like, I'd like to just give an overview of the project, uh, and just talk about where we're at right now, why we're doing this, what the reason is for, uh, this project. So as you can see from the photos, the, the A field, as we call it, is in pretty poor condition. The, the grandstands are out of compliance. The field is, you know, well past its useful life. We have, uh, a track that's only six lanes. We're unable to host, uh, larger track and field events, which, you know, also hinders our track and field, uh, athletics for the students. And we also need, in dire need of an athletic training facility for the students. I believe the district feels that by constructing this, there's two things that also, there's a lot of pride in the football team. The football team, I think, is undefeated right now. Um, and they're, you know, we really want to show support, and the district's very, uh, in tune on upgrading their facilities. And this is gonna be the start of many upgrades that we're looking at doing at the school district. Uh, and, and, and part of the upgrades that we've already done, I mean, we've done numerous upgrades to other schools. We've been upgrading, um, you know, CUSA, HVAC, getting rid of asbestos flooring, all kinds of good things for the school district. So we're, the school district's really on a, a very large push to upgrade the facilities. Now, what this project will consist of is taking the six-lane track, making it an eight-lane track, allows to host events. We are going to increase the capacity, as Paul was requesting, of the, uh, grandstands. The grandstands, uh, right now, we're looking at a product by Southern Bleacher. Everything will be ADA compliant. We also set the grandstands about ten foot back from the track, so that an ambulance could drive down the front if need be. Uh, the intent is to have all the, uh, spectators in the grandstands and that front area clear, except when people are passing through, uh, between the track and the, and the home grandstand bleachers. Uh, the away ble, uh, grandstands, uh, will also have very, they'll be similar capacity. It won't be this, obviously, the same as the home grandstands, but we understand that there's a large uh, desire and need for more seating when you have homecoming, uh, at those games. The field is going to be a artificial turf athletic field, so it'll be synthetic grass. And I think that also, maybe that's something, Paul, we could look at as far as, when I look at impervious coverage, it's always been my take, or just in my experience, I don't know if the ordinance is different, but the artificial turf is considered impervious surface. And if that's the case, that would put us over to twenty percent. Now, if there is a provision in the ordinance that I didn't see, which treats artificial turf as pervious, uh, when you're looking at zoning, like a pervious pavement, then yeah, that would, that would, that would greatly, uh, help us out as far as the not need, the, the need for a variance. But it's my, my, it was always my intent when preparing the plan that we would be over to twenty percent. But we can, we can definitely show you the boundaries of the lot, which I think you had correct on the plan. And we can show you the impervious surfaces now and what's proposed to show you that, where we're gonna be with the percentage. And if a variance is needed, we'll have to make an, uh, appearance at the zoning hearing board. Prior to that, we will look at the off-street parking, which is across the street, and look at making sure that there's adequate stalls to accommodate the spectators. And if not, uh, we may need to add a few stalls and/or, um, you know, request a variance. With that said, um, we are proposing, uh, you know, right now during games, we have to bring in portage on, so we want to have, obviously, restrooms for men, uh, women's and men's restroom facilities. So that's, that's incorporated into the project. We also are gonna have an entry gate for people to come in, uh, along with, um, you know, upgraded fencing, because the fencing right now has barbed wire. We want to do something a little bit more aesthetic decorative, so it's, you know, it also enhances the facility. Along the street frontage, we're proposing new curb and sidewalk. Um, the, we will show, I, I, for this exercise, like the sketch plan exercise, we didn't show any shade trees, but we will have shade trees along the frontage, just so the board knows. Obviously, we would put them in places, if we are adding trees to the plan, we would put them in places where it wouldn't impact existing athletic events. Regarding the shop, put discus javelin, all the field events that we're talking about, they, we can, we can depict where they're gonna be located on the plan uh, and how we're gonna upgrade those as well. Finally, uh, the athletic complex, so the, the athletic training facility. So we're gonna have, that is to the south of the plan. That is that kind of like, I guess, kind of looks like a tomahawk-looking structure. So what we're proposing to do there is we are gonna have a bus drop-off. So what happens now during the games, students will come from the high school, they bus them over, drop them off at the facility. So what we want to do during the games is have a, as a, have a drop-off area. That's why we have a little bump out on the street, so that, so that both away and home teams can be dropped off there. They can go to their respective locker rooms and utilize that facility. The facility's also going to have a physio room. It'll have a, a video room, it's gonna have weight training, uh, all items that would, uh, be incorporated into athletic facility. But it's not just for football, there's gonna be locker rooms for other sports like baseball, soccer, et cetera. And I thi, I think I forgot to mention that the field is a multi-sport field. So since we're doing artificial turf, we can do, you know, soccer, uh, lacrosse, whatever sport we want to do. We can do up to about four sports on the field, which gets greater use for the district and allows for greater opportunities for the students. At this point in the process, we are at our sketch plan review, we wanted to get through this meeting. Uh, we have a full survey for the property. And what we, what we're looking to do is obviously get the feedback, and I appreciate the comments from the engineer, the planner, the board, the Fire Marshal. Uh, we will, obviously, as we go through the process, we will comply. If there's anything that we think we might need a waiver for, we'll make sure we get that on any letters we submit when we submit the full land development. However, um, you know, we, you know, we're excited about the project, the board is, and I brought Rodney here. I think Rodney can kind of be a little more enthusiastic than I am about, I'm very excited about it, but Rodney, you know, he's, he, I'm gonna bring him up, let him talk a little bit about it. But, um, just to, you know, the overall scale of the project is a big benefit for the community. Um, and we're, you know, we're all, we're obviously looking for any feedback that you may have. So.
Mike, do you have just, for a minute, just clarify on the lighting? So the lighting's gonna be permanent?
So we want to do, yeah, so the lighting, we're looking to do, uh, I don't, you know, a name, I'm just, just for, like a, a sports lighting type lighting for the facility, which would be turned on during game days. Uh, when, you know, when there's no games going on, we can, you know, reduce the foot candles, which will show on a plan, the lighting levels, so that they're more of a security style lighting, so it's not, you know, the real bright sports lights that you see. We also want to add, I think I saw a comment too in the letter, about adding lighting to the parking areas. There's no lighting in the parking areas where people park across the street. So we, within the final land of, or the, the submitted land development plan, we'll add in lighting fixtures in the parking lot, uh, incorporate the ADA comments that you have, and make sure that we, um, create a, a state-of-the-art Class A facility for the City of Chester and the school district. Rodney, uh, did you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Um, I was wondering about the, um, signage, did you plan on having some signage?
Well, we will do a scoreboard. There will be signage, directional signage at the stadium to direct people where to go. Um, when you talk about signage, you're talking about like a naming of the field.
Just upland athletic or whatever?
Yeah, we will have stuff, we will have signs like that, and if we, we will work to comply with the sign ordinance. If there's something that we don't comply with, then.
It has a new name, doesn't it?
Well, it, the name, so it's, you know, naming, that, that gets very tricky, um, when you talk about naming, because the athletic field is named after, I can't think of the athlete's name, Coach Bell would know. Betty Wright, yeah. So that's the, and there's, it's my understanding, there's no intent of changing that or anything like that, but that's the track. But they may name the field, I don't have any information on that right now. I wish Coach Bell were here to kind of give me that information, but, yeah.
You could use both.
Yeah, 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 it could be whatever, but yeah, that, that, there's no proposed change to that. And, and part of that, um, you know, that concrete area, yeah, we're gonna break that up, definitely, Paul. I just, when we get into, like, more detailed design, I'll, I'll come up with some landscape features, some pervious, uh, brick paver, something to really make it look nice. And, and, and I also want to add that we've had conversations about making that almost like a, like an area where people, like, you know, where you have past, I guess, athletic champions or, or esp, like, people who are, you know, maybe went on to the NFL or different sports, have something there where, where it's almost like a,
Hall of Fame kind of.
Like a Hall of Fame-type thing, yeah. So there was some talk about that. So we, we have a lot of good ideas, we're gonna obviously bring it to the board, we appreciate the feedback. And any more questions, just let me know.
Dumpsters. What are you doing about your dumpsters? How are you buffering them?
Uh, well Rodney, you wanna talk about the pickup there, the trash pickup at the stadium?
Okay. State your name and address.
Rodney Robertson, 232 West Nice Street. Um, Rodney Robertson. So, um, as far as the answer for the dumpster, so right now, the dumpster is considered right there where the loading dock area is, which is, you can see it when you're going up the road, you can see where the dumpsters are. Right now, we're proposing to pretty much move them somewhere. Where at right now, we're not sure, but we wanna put it in an area where, you know, no one is able to just bring items up and just dump it in there. We're gonna make sure that it's secure in a nice, safe area, so far as the dumpsters. But when I say see, y'all say pride. See!
Pride.
See!
Pride.
See! There you go. So he said I was gonna be the exciting part. I'm really not, I'm really not the exciting part. But what I can say is that the Chester Upland School District is excited. Uh, we have, with, in this town, we have, we have some talented young men and women, um, and we, we're just not giving them that proper justice right now as far as on a playing field. Um, so we wanna make sure that our district is gonna be, you know, in competition with all the other districts in this area and far beyond. So one of the things that we sat around, and we're constantly in these meetings, and we're thinking about, how can we get these kids involved, and how can we get our young people to buy into a process? So one of the things we came up with is that, you know, our kids are into sports, and, and, and they're pretty good at it. And we started looking at some of the ideals, sat in the room with people, and they was like, listen, maybe we can help out with a project or two. And this is one of the projects that came up. One of the things that we wanna do is, we know that sports brings family and friends together. We, we understand that, we, we know that, that that's what it does. Look, we're, we're, we're Eagles fans in here, we're Phillies fans in here, and we're, we're passionate about that. And we are passionate about having our young men and our young women be in a stadium of the art facility where they can, you know, say, hey, listen, we got the same thing everybody else have. So we're excited on, on this project, we're in the beginning stages of it. Uh, we, we, we've been talking about plenty of things. One of the questions that came up, we do have a committee that we meet, and one of the questions that came up was, you know, that place, you know, people come there, they exercise, they walk the track, are y'all gonna stop them from doing that? I said, not at all. That is not for just us. That stadium is gonna be for the community, for the community, and I'll stand on that until whatever. And I'm like, listen, we're not gonna stop these people from coming up there every day, exercising, walking it. What it looks like, we don't know, we'll have to put something in, in place. And of course, you know, we're gonna have to protect it, so there probably will be a time where it might just be closed, where, you know, it opens up at a certain time and closes at a certain time, just so that the facility can stay shiny and bright, and we don't have anyone come up there and try to destroy it for the community. So we're excited, I think that, you know, um, this is a good thing. And, um, any questions?
I just have one. So it's gonna be one entrance in, fenced-in entrance, entrance off of Lamoken Street only?
Well, the main, the main entrance, the main entrance right now is off of Lamoken. Uh, that, it, there's, there's alternate entrances for, I guess, personnel vehicles, if, if there's ever an emergency, there's ways to get out. But if, um, you know, we can, we can talk about, you know, obviously, in our planning to look at other entrances, 'cause it does bring a lot of people, and trying to fit everybody in one entrance, uh, could be difficult, so we can look at that. And, and definitely get some, definitely some other, we wanna have everybody enter in one spot, but as far as exit, 'cause you gotta control who, you know, if we gotta control how people are coming in, check, make sure there's, you know, everything's safe. But when it comes to leaving, we might be able to, you know, have some exits to allow people to leave much easier. Um, the, uh, oh, and there is gonna be a press box on the grandstand, yeah.
Is there anything under the grandstand, or is it gonna be open?
There will be storage.
Okay.
Yep.
So are there like any closed buildings?
No locker rooms, like before.
Yes.
Yeah, the locker rooms will be in a different building.
The locker rooms would go inside that, um, inside the, the tomahawk-looking building, yeah.
Okay.
And all buses will be dropping off at that spot?
That is the plan right now, yeah.
Drop off and pick up will be at that spot?
Yes.
Okay. You know, you know, it's gonna always infringe on the community, surrounding community.
Yeah.
Definitely gonna have to figure out a better way to control traffic when big games go on.
I don't think we'll ever be able to control the parking, because I live quite a while from the field, and they park on my street. So, and I don't have a problem with that, 'cause sea pride is in me, and I know there are some things that have to be ironed out, but I'm excited, I'm sorry. I'm excited, because-
It's about time.
Yeah, I, I'm one of those folks who was upset when we were not given the pool in Chester High, so I wanna see anything that we can get come, and I know there are things that have to be ironed out. So I'm excited. I, I just have to say, I have to get it out.
I'm gonna ask a question about, uh, the baseball fields. Are there two baseball fields there?
There's a baseball field on the, yeah, thanks, Paul. There, that's the baseball field, there's also a softball field to the south.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, I know you said the stands on the home and the visitor side, that you would have to push them back some, would that interfere with any of that?
No. No, no, we, yeah, we, this is based on a survey. It gets a little tight there, but we, we have enough clearance there, it's clearance to make it work, yeah.
And I know you were speaking about high-walks there also, so-
We had to go a little more narrow. Well, we need to get room around the back, so we had to go narrow with the grandstand for the visitor, uh, to make it so we can get room around the back and not infringe on the baseball. So we'll depict that on the plan.
Are we getting new dugouts?
There, there are, there is some talk of doing some additional upgrades, yeah, yeah, definitely.
I play ball up there sometimes.
You know, if you, now, I, I wish, the, the, the guy that maintains the baseball field, he's very passionate about that. He does do a good job of that field, like, I wish he was doing my lawn, like, he does such a good job on that field. Um, 'cause when we talked about turf, he was like, you know, what are you talking about? You know, I take care of that thing, that field perfectly, so. But, yeah, we, we make sure we don't impact the baseball field.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Any other question? All right, thank you. What is that?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'd like to call up Collier Engineering. Mr. Madison, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We provided our engineering sketch plan review dated October 6th, 2025. Be happy to answer any questions. Overall, it's a great project. High school football was some of my best memories, uh, so it looks that it is well-needed. I drove by there today, and I was happy to see a lot of the community walking the track, using the facility, so that's good. Really, the only other comments I wanna point out is, the stormwater management will take some, uh, real thought, um, because the synthetic fields are impervious, that trying to encourage infiltration, there'll have to be some infiltration testing, and it will require an MPDS permit, so all that will take some engineering, so. Other than that, we think it's a great project. Any questions from my memo? Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Onto our second item. This is Grace Manor Homes. This is a land development, again, first review. We, as a planning commission, as you, I should, you, I should say, saw this on August 13th as a sketch plan, um, and this project stays the same. It proposes to resubside three existing parcels on the site of the former Plaski, Plaski School into a 21-lot residential subdivision with nine sets of single-family semi-detached dwellings, which are basically twins, and three single-family detached dwellings. Project is in the R3 district. Don't look at my laser, that's the same thing. And the TOD-oriented, or transit-oriented development overlay district. As we stated in our sketch plan, this project does comply with the comprehensive plan. It revitalizes underutilized land through infill housing, creates housing options, and encourages walkability near the Highland Avenue train station. I'm just gonna go through a few things in my...
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, let me pause then. We skipped ahead on public comment on the sketch plan.
Yep, we surely did.
Let's take a pause on this and allow public comment.
Back it up, back it up.
Back it up.
Okay. Any public comment on the sketch plan? This is your time. State your name and your residence. Thank you. I think we all got so excited that we-
I think you're right, I think you're right.
Sorry about that.
Good afternoon, my name is Missy Jones, I'm at 340 West 22nd Street in Chester. Um, and I just wanna make a quick comment on the sketch plan. I, I'm super excited about it, and it's because my son's been playing Chester soccer since the eighth grade. He's now in 11th grade, and for about two years now, they've been promised, um, being able to play at the new sports complex at WISFIS. And although they're a sports team in the city of Chester, they still don't have the ability to utilize the sports complex as they were promised when they originally had proposed it. Um, so I'm just excited at the fact that Chester students now have the opportunity to play at an actual sports complex. Um, even when it comes to working out, we still have to go to, you know, to Planet Fitness, he doesn't have authorization to work out or do anything at this sports complex that our students were promised to do. Um, so I just wanna just make that comment and say I'm super excited that our students are finally able to have that, uh, ability to do that. It's unfortunate that he's about to graduate and he's not gonna be able to utilize it, but I'm definitely excited for the students that are going to be able to use this complex.
Okay, thank you very much. Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Shaquon Davis, I'm gonna say 1 East 4th Street, just, um, first and foremost, I wanna commend the school district, um, for all the hard work they're doing in upgrading our facilities. And as a proud, you know, Chester football alumni, as well as Chester Track alumni, I'm excited to see the development that's happening. The question I had in regards to the lighting would, would be, um, one, I don't want you all to shortchange yourselves when it comes to the exposure that could happen from the lighting in regards to, one, safety, uh, for our residents and having the proper lighting on each block of the street, making sure we're going to, uh, more specifically looking at the McConcord Avenue, if we can have proper lighting going across there. I know the highway entrance is there, but, you know, a lot of cars go that direction. Um, so in the evening times, making sure that safety protocol is there with the lighting, um, you know, including the resident's opinion in that is very important. And as well as, I wanna say, go back to the school and go back to the students. Um, Friday night lights is something that has never happened in the city of Chester. We've never had a night game, which limits the exposure to the kids when it comes to, you know, uh, being on TV, which helps, you know, with not just local exposure, but national exposure, so how that can help, you know, bring money and revenue to the school district. Um, because one thing I know that parents are gonna be, you know, thinking about is, with the upgrade of this facility and everything, will the taxes go up, or how might, you know, things change financially with the school district making these decisions? But at the end of the day, we all know that this is gonna bring nothing but positivity to the community, um, and bring some of our children back. Sometimes we know that kids go to other schools for better opportunities and different things like that, and that can actually help our kids, you know, take, you know, more pride in their community, you know, in that athletics. So that was just a general comment on saying, you know, a job well done to everyone involved in these plans, but just making sure that we, uh, you know, emphasize the community aspect with the lighting and, you know, you know, safety and those things of that nature, because with the lighting comes, you know, police presence and different events, you know, hiring more police officers. All those things come into play and, you know, one hand washes the other, so I wanted to make sure that, uh, even though it seems very small, but lighting is a very, you know, pertinent and important issue when it comes to, you know, upgrading facilities. So that was my only comment. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
All right.
All right, we can now move forward.
All right. Thank you. I think we're all excited, I agree with you.
Yes.
All right, let me jump back into letter, yes? Oh, Annette, yeah, please.
I think I better do a point of order before we get too involved in the next one. Uh, I have to sustain from any comments or voting on the next, uh, Grace Manor project, 'cause I'm the executive director and then also the developer of the project.
Great.
Sorry about that.
I think we're good. All right, thank you, Annette.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, going back to the letter, the Planning and Zoning Department letter dated September 30th, uh, as I mentioned, these proposed dwellings are allowed by right, um, based on the bulk table that was provided in the land development plan. Each lot complies with the zoning dimensions. Parking complies, um, and then they did address many of the comments in our sketch plan memo, so that's a good thing. Uh, one thing that I think deserves a little bit discussion or comment on is just, uh, the waiver that they're requesting for, um, open space. And they are, they, the applicant, are indicating that the access community center functions as a integral component of the subdivision as open space. Um, and they believe that satisfies the requirement for common open space. From the Planning and Zoning Department's perspective, uh, we could, we believe this is correct and we, we are okay with this, because again, the access center is directly southwest of the site, um, and it does provide open space, playground space, indoor rec space, um, immediately adjacent to the community. So you have our opinion on that, and then I'm spick- skipping to the second page or third page, excuse me, of the-
Can I ask a question about the open space?
Sure, please.
Okay. Uh, explain the, I have my idea in my head, but explain to me the purpose of the opal, open space.
In our ordinances, um, when there is a proposed subdivision for residential use, there's a requirement to provide some common open space, and we had mentioned this in our sketch plan review of this project as well. As you know, common open space provides an opportunity for play areas, exercise for that proposed subdivision. That's what we're addressing. So in this instance, we believe that the common open space can be provided for this new subdivision, literally across the street, Harwick Street, at the Community Access Center through the available open space and recreational space that they have. So what is gonna be required is the request for a waiver from our ordinance to meet that requirement. Did that ask your, answer your question, or?
Yeah, because my thought was, open space meant that if you're gonna have all these houses, there would be a playground somewhere.
Not necessarily, but it could be a playground. It would be some common open space, shared space, it doesn't always have to be a playground. Playgrounds are well-needed, and that was our thought too, in agreeing with this, is that the Community Access Center provides that opportunity, since they do have a playground and a gym and other amenities. Does that help?
I just wanted that clarification.
Okay. Yep. Moving on to page three of the memo, or letter, excuse me, um, we just want to make sure the applicant works with the Planning and Zoning Department to assign address numbers for each of the properties. We shared the fire marshal memo, which I'll go over in a second. The Shade Tree Commission did not provide, uh, formal comments yet. They're basically asking that the applicant provide more detail on their planting plan so they can actually, uh, develop concrete comments for them. Um, right now, the, it was somewhat vague in the application on what the proposed planting scheme would be on the planting plan. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight is that we're still waiting for the county's comments, which should be coming after Delaware County Planning Commission's meeting on October 16th. All in all, this, this project does meet, uh, our zoning requirements, um, and it does and it does fit with our comprehensive plan, but we do think there's some outstanding items that I've addressed here. I'm gonna follow up with the Fire Marshal Office memo and then obviously the Colliers Engineers has some other comments as well. So let me, oh, go ahead. Oh, let me jump into the, what the Fire Marshal Office memo indicated.
Can I get my shade tree question now?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Do you want to, do you want to mention something?
Before I forget it.
Yeah, yeah, please do.
Okay. It's always been my question as to, once these trees are planted, I know we're planting everywhere, once they're planted, who maintains them? And I'm asking that because at one time, there were a lot of shade trees planted and nobody took care of them and they became a tripping hazard and a whole bunch of other hazards. So I'm just starting to see somebody trim trees back, just. But who will be responsible for these shade trees once they're planted?
Well, if they're in the public right-of-way, which most street trees are, not always, but most of the time they are, there would be the city's responsibility. It would, yes, and that is exactly why we have a Shade Tree Commission. There's a disagreement. That's one of the reasons we have a Shade Tree Commission, so we actually have the right trees proposed and planted. Because if you see many of the trees planted around here, they were actually not the best street trees, whether they were Norway maples, other types of trees that just don't work with our sidewalk system and the areas that they were planted in. So that's something that we are very conscious going forward. And that's again, one of the reasons we have the Shade Tree Commission to guide us on that.
There's a hand behind you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I have a correction on that answer. So all rightways, meaning the sidewalks and the streets are owned by the city of Chester, but they have to be maintained by whomever's property. It's all, so the trees that I have in my sidewalk in front of me, my house, have to be maintained by myself in both the sidewalk. I'm responsible for any maintenance that needs to happen on the trees as well as the sidewalk.
Okay, say that again about who owns the sidewalk.
So the right-of-way itself is owned by the city of Chester and all the streets are owned by the city of Chester, well, unless it's a state. But the homeowner is responsible for the, to maintain and upkeep of the sidewalk. If the sidewalk has cracks in it or leaves in it and trouble, the homeowner is responsible to maintain the sidewalk in addition to the trees that are planted on the sidewalks in front of their property.
So does that homeowner have a choice as to whether they want that tree to maintain?
And that's a dilemma. It is. And that's a big dilemma towards the homeowner. That's my only comment.
Well, to be honest with you, that can be something clarified in the recording documents too, on the maintenance of those trees.
And that's important because it is a hazard. And if somebody trips over some of the things that have been happening along 7th Street with those sidewalks and trees, I guess the homeowner is gonna get sued.
Yeah. Well, again, it's partly to make sure whatever is planted there is, will work there and grow into something that will fit, exactly. Let me, let me finish what the Fire Marshal Office said unless you have any other comments. They were pretty specific on five things. One was having no parking signage on Harwick Street and Grace Manor Street. Which, let me get to the plan here. That would be Grace Manor Street here, Harwick Street here. Since there's fire engine turning radii that needs to be accommodated, we would want to make sure that there's no parking on, basically around the intersection so the fire truck could make the turns. So we're asking for signage, or the Fire Marshal Office is asking for signage. It's asking for naming of the alleyways that are unnamed on the plan. That's just for navigation and response coordination. They're asking for no parking signage at all on the proposed alleys, which there is, these alleys that go through the site, but also on Grace Street and James Street, which is really an alley on the north side of the site. They'd asked for a fire truck turning template to show, this relates to where the no parking signage should occur, where parked vehicles would occur. So there's an understanding of where that no parking zone would be and we could analyze that on the drawing. And then lastly, there was a request to improve coverage by the fire hydrants and they offered three areas for this that should be investigated. That would be Grace Street, the intersection of Grace Street and James Street, which is up in the top right corner here. Grace Manor Street and West 7th Street, which would be in this area. And then Harwick and 7th Street, where there is an existing hydrant. We just want to make sure that that's part of the planning for this project. That is a summary of the Fire Marshal Office memo. And then I did mention that the Shade Tree Commission comments will be forthcoming, but they need more information from the applicant. Is there any other questions related to the Fire Marshal memo or the Planning and Zoning Department memo or letter, excuse me? I'm happy to take it.
Do we have a landscaping plan?
You...
Seminary one?
On the...
From the last submission, is there a land, okay.
This is, this is, I believe, the landscaping plan. And again, it identified the street trees, which really, there are only three species presented. But again, we didn't know exactly where all them, all the species were allocated. They were only identified down here, so we're just asking for more specific information.
So, am I to assume that there may be that many trees in front of the houses in Harwick? On Harwick Street? Or would it be like a single row?
Well, this is something that I think the applicant should help clarify because they do have street trees on the new Harwick extension, so on both sides of the street. But then there's also what I would call a buffer planting that's further west on Harwick Street, which the applicant can help explain will eventually be actually part of the access center. Will those trees be planted? I'm not so sure if that land gets transferred. So that's to be determined, I think, or clarified by the applicant.
Any other questions?
I see Annette staring.
Any other questions?
And that would be the same on 7th Street. There's quite a few.
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, there's just a row, one row in front of the new homes, right. Which, in my mind, is a well-needed improvement to have street trees along with this development. I would not discourage that.
Trying to put trees. Okay. No other questions? All right. So if the applicant could come forward, state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Ante. I'm the owner of MG Engineering Associates LLC. My office address is 334 West Front Street, Media, PA. I am the design engineer for the project. We, you know, just to kind of just piggyback off the shade tree comments since, Annette's staring me. I know you can't really comment on the application. You can't, you're commenting with your eyes, though. I did, I did show three species. I did talk to Lisa. They want, and I can add, Paul, I can add individual labels to each of the trees and I think they want to add a few more species. So when we resubmit the plans, we'll make sure we individual label each tree and add additional species that were recommended by the Shade Tree Commission. We did, irrespective of that, we did address their commentary on the details. They wanted me to modify the shade tree planting detail. So we did address that and we did submit a response letter to address that. However, we'll make sure that we address their forthcoming comments and individually label each of the trees, which is, will comply. But, so, I think, Paul, you think we could just go to the site plan? I think it'd be good just to give the board an overview of the last, I just want to kind of give you an idea what we looked at last time when I was here for the sketch plan and talk about what we're proposing now. So if you recall from the original sketch plan submission, the houses along Grace Manor Street, which we're calling it, and Harwick Street all had driveways within the front and just one alleyway. So working with the planning, nope, there you go, Paul, that's great. So working with the Planning Department, you know, we came up with this modified design where the alleyways are in the rear of the property and then that, that does two things. So that allows for, you know, it allows for less curb cuts along the street frontage, but also helps accommodate more parking for the residential homes because now they have two stalls that are on their site in the rear of the property, but they also have the parking up front. So I think it, I think it provides a cleaner design. And I think overall, from a planning perspective, I think Paul agrees as well. It was mainly Paul's idea. I don't want to give them all the credit. But we, you know, we, we thought that it definitely helped out the plan. So if I, if I could just kind of, just talk about the project. So, you know, as we know, it's 21 residential homes. We are proposing alleyway streets. I think Paul gave a really good overview. And we are proposing new sanitary sewer lines on Grace Manor Street, stormwater lines and a looped water service around the site to accommodate the water requirements from Chester Water Authority, which is still an ongoing coordination item. We are also, on Harwick Street, we're proposing to use an existing sanitary line. Now, there were some comments from Colliers about that, which I have a meeting with Delcora on Friday to kind of work them out and address them. So what I think we may end up doing after meeting with Delcora is either making that line pure storm if Delcora confirms there's no sanitary going to it and then we'll construct a new sanitary line or work out a new storm line in that area. But that's all going to be after my meeting with Delcora on Friday. If I could just go through, you know, I think, Paul, we covered the zoning, we covered the plan. I think it would be good just to kind of go through the engineer review letter. And, you know, pretty much everything is a will comply. If we're talking about general comments, like if we go, comment one was like the Fire Marshal, which will comply. The Shade Tree comments, we're going to comply. The sewer planning modules submitted to DEP for their review. The cost estimate will be provided. That's, that's a will comply. The, and number five is a similar letter from Delaware County Regional Water Quality Authority, which we do have a capacity cert from Delcora. And like I said, we'll be meeting them on Friday to coordinate some sewer issues that came up in the review letter. Number six mentions a will serve letter from PICO for gas and electric. Keep in mind, there's no gas proposed as part of the project. Everything's going to be all electric. We did submit an application to PICO and when we get the will serve letter, we'll make sure we provide that. So that's a will comply. Subdivision plan will be submitted under our next round of revisions. Labeling of the streets, if there are some labels that weren't on the plans, we will comply. That's a note comment. And if we have to label, if the alleys are getting labeled, we'll make sure we label all the alleys. The comment number 10 talks about signage in two ways and one ways for the alleyways. Just so you know, the intent of the plan is from Harwick Street down to Grace Street would all be one way. There's a larger alley in between, going north and south between Grace and Harwick Street, which is two-way. And if there was some clarification on signage needed, we can comply and make sure we meet those requirements. Number 11, though, I wanted to discuss because that talks about trash pickup. I guess the applicant's recommending that trash gets picked up in the rear of the houses. You know, given the size of the alleyways, it just, and given our experience with alleyways and trash trucks, they tend to be very disruptive to the alleyways. Alleyways aren't typically your first streets that get resurfaced. You mainly resurface your regular roadways. So in our opinion, the way we have it set up now would be the most beneficial and provide adequate trash pickup. If the trash pickup occurred in the front of the homes, especially since our right-of-way widths are more than adequate to accommodate it. So we would generally like to keep the trash trucks along the main roads to the maximum extent possible. Number 12 is a will comply. 13 is a will comply. 14 is a will comply. 15 has to do with the sanitary sewer profile. We will meet those requirements. We will comply with that. The subdivision, now I'm in subdivision land development comments. Obviously, the first comment, we will provide any easements. I have no record of any easements on the property, but I'll work with the owner to see, you know, to go through the title report and submit the title report to demonstrate any required or existing easements. When we were in our early coordination with Delcora, we had no record of any easements on the property. And, and as I further coordinate with Delcora, the sanitary line that's running down the property may have just been for the school district because the school district own the alleyway. So there may have not been a need for an easement on that. But we'll make sure we clarify that comment. Number two, for waiver for preliminary final submission for land development, we would obviously request a waiver for that. We did draft a waiver request letter. We'll make sure that's in the updated letter. Item number three, we will comply. Four is a will comply. We are requesting a waiver from 131004D. That's a comment number five. And that would be for the alignment of the streets. Obviously, there is, you know, we talked about this last time where there's that open space area that's adjacent to the access center and the streets are jogged. They have, they have an offset. We did demonstrate that the fire truck can make the turning radius around that offset along with the trash trucks. And we did work with the access center, actually, you know, Annette did as, she worked with the access center so that we will dedicate that open space property to them. When there was a, when the original land development came in for the access center and they vacated Harwick Street, they took half the road. So we're kind of, you know, in lack of better terms, we're kind of, there's not much we can do about the jog in the roadway. There's two thoughts for that. One thought is, it does act somewhat of a traffic calming measure, so you don't get the cut-throughs. And also, it's, you know, a kind of, in general, it works from a traffic standpoint. So we don't really see any issue with that waiver. And we also, we have a hardship as well to make it, in order to make it work. Six is a, oh, number six talks about the right-of-way width. We do show a 55-foot right-of-way. We did that so we can have more planting area for the trees and we can have greater setback for the sidewalks. We felt like it created a better design, but plus also have adequate space for circulation along the roadway. So the ordinance requires 50. We're proposing 55. It's an additional five feet. I don't know if it warrants a waiver because we're having more right-of-way than what's required. If you think it requires a waiver, we would request a waiver. But we felt that this, having that 55-foot right-of-way allowed for a greater area for planting and just a better design. So number seven, we are requesting a waiver for, and for the, a partial waiver for resurface and improved Grace and West 7th. And I think there's a comment, the plan should be revised to indicate full pavement of the James alleyway across the full frontage of the property, including the previously vacated right-of-way of Harwick Street pavement. So I guess the engineer is requesting that we pave along Harwick Street, just the top portion of the plan. James Street, is that what you're requesting? And, and we're going to be tearing that up anyway for the water line, so I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, I didn't, James and Grace are in as bad shape as they are. By the time you're done with the project, they're gonna fall apart.
I don't necessarily see, I mean, we're going to be digging them up anyway. Now, I would say Grace, now, you're talking about Grace Street as well? You want to get that full? Well, we'll have to, I guess I'll have to work with the applicant on that, on what they, how they want to propose and proceed with that.
I have a question. If this project didn't place, take place, who would take care of those streets? If this project didn't take place, who would take care of paving those streets?
Well, Grace Street and James Street would be on the list of the city to maintain.
So we can work with them.
The SADA requires developers to do full frontage improvements, so that's why the waivers would be adjusted occasionally.
Yeah, we're going to be tearing up James Street already for the water line. That's going to get pretty much completely, you know, cut open. Grace Street, we'll, we'll just, I'll get back with the owner and we'll provide a, you know, we'll work with the city and see what works out best at that location. Number eight is the traffic impact study, which we did provide. We indicated a number of trips, and it indicated that no study was required. Nine is the recreation fee waiver, which Paul discussed very well. 10 and 11 are will complies. I think everything else is a will comply. 12 and 13 are water comments, 14 to 17 are all, I don't, I don't think I want to read all, every one of them, but they're will comply. Zoning, I think we discussed zoning. Paul indicated that we did meet the zoning requirements. And then as far as stormwater management, irrespective of the comment regarding Del Cora, all their comments are will comply regarding the stormwater comments, so. And we do have an MPDS application. We'll, we'll get a copy over to the city so they can distribute. So that's really all I have for today. I mean, we, it's good that we had the sketch plan meeting because we're all very familiar with the project, so I think it, there's no sense in re-talking about everything again. Yep, so. If there's any questions for me, please let me know.
Can you just put, put that, up the picture of the development and the other center? I just want to see that for a second. The two of them combined.
A photograph or?
No, no, no. The, the drawing.
Oh, the overhead.
Yeah, the overhead. So that's a lot. And that's the center.
Yep.
And what's that black area?
That's the playground. Yep.
It is a playground?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm happy.
What you don't see there, they're building a building, mound, a gymnasium.
Right here.
I, I was just, I was just concerned about something for the kids to do.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I have a question. I see who the applicants are. This program is funded through what, HUD or?
There's various funding sources for the project, one of them being HUD. There's also, well, I guess it's CPF funding, which we have, and then other funding sources. And I, I guess Annette, are you free to talk about the funding?
Yeah, it's a multiple funding. Some state, local, and private, and reconstruction loan financing as well. Those layers.
So will these homes only be for a first-time home buyer?
Exactly. All the homes have to comply with HUD income, income qualifications, so added below zero, 80% of median income. So they all will be affordable based on the HUD income limits and first-time home buyers.
Okay. I have a trash truck. I'm back to the trash truck.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you're saying the trash trucks are going to come on 7th Street to pick up the trash?
Yeah, we did show a plan. We had a trash truck.
Yeah, I don't have it on.
Oh, we don't have it on.
I mean, like, most of us get it in the alley.
I don't know where they pick up on 7th now, do you?
On mine, they, I'm on 7th Street, and they go on James Street to pick up my trash, which is my alley.
By the west side. Where she lived and where this is, the alley is narrow. It's a different side of the west side than you are compared to where this is. This is over furthest west, and they're directing an alley in between the ones that face 7th Street. It's a narrower alley, so. And then James Street is also, well, they're just right there.
Yeah. But the, the reason why I asked if they, when they pick up trash on 7th Street, okay, I've noticed that anybody that has their trash picked up in front of their house, they don't move the trash cans, and it looks horrible. So you have a whole row of orange down the street, whereas the people who have theirs picked up in the alley, they don't put a trash can in front of their house. So the aesthetics of it, just take a look around.
Yeah. And that, and that's part of our recommendation because it's really based on that happening. And that's traditionally, cities had alleys, alleys were the utility area for utility poles and wires and trash pickup and parking. So that's what the traditional aspect of it is.
So maybe there could be something where you folks will know, pull that trash can in or something, if that's what you have to do? That's it? Just, I don't know how that would work.
Anybody have anything else for Mr. Galante?
No.
No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now the city engineer, Mr. Madison.
Thank you, madam chairperson. We submitted our engineer's review letter dated October 6th. Mike Galante reviewed a lot of the highlights. Again, we support this project, it's a good project. In terms of stormwater management, because of the Plasky School being there prior and having a great deal of impervious coverage, what's being proposed as new impervious coverage doesn't increase it to the point that they have to have onsite stormwater management. So our focus really looked at stormwater conveyance, and we have a fair amount of comments. And I'll provide some additional information to Mike Galante that we found today with a site visit and some of the old plans for the community center on where the combined sewers are that will be helpful for his meeting with Del Cora on Friday. But I think our letter contains a lot of details, the details that can be achieved, and, and hopefully it'll be ready for you for the, the next time it's presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any questions of me.
Anybody have any questions? I do. I thought the city was doing away with the combined sewer, that they were trying to do away with some of that on new construction.
Right. Del Cora has a policy for residential subdivisions. They're trying to separate the existing combined sewers to have dedicated sanitary sewer extensions and dedicated stormwater extensions. That's much of what the discussion will be on Friday with Mike Galante and Del Cora, is just trying to make that happen. There is an existing 20-inch combined sewer that goes down what was the previous center line of Harwick Street that wasn't really shown on the plans that do show up on the old community center plans, and, and I think that information will help decide with some of the, the connection points. They, they have a bunch of inlets throughout the property that adequately capture the water at intersections, but where they connect to the Del Cora's existing combined sewer with stormwater and where they're going to extend sanitary sewer, dedicated sewer lines on the, through the project has to be worked out.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Chair Dennis, do you want to ask if there's any public comment on?
Yes, I do. Are there any public comments? If so, state your name and your residence or business address.
Hi.
Hello.
Veronica Woods, Daniel Woods, Real Estate, 400 Wells Street. Can you have a public question? Is that out of order? I have a question, not a comment.
Is it related to this product? Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, for Mr. Galante. You mentioned that there was, be no gas service to the community, everything would be electric. I was wondering, will there be enough of infrastructure so that the new homeowners can choose to get gas down the line, or will it be a major project for them if they were trying to do that?
The proposal right now is for all-electric housing. If they wanted to add gas, you'd have to add a new main, and that's not part of the project. So everything is going to be electric. And obviously, it's, you know, that's generally how, you know, some, some areas in the country that actually outlaw gas. You can't even do a gas stove anymore. So in this case, I think we're going to go with all-electric, right? Correct, Annette?
That's correct.
Yep.
Will they inform the?
It would be, it would be difficult to get a gas.
Will they inform the home buyers?
Yes.
Of this?
Everything.
Right, of course, yeah.
So we are waiting on a motion. We should be getting a motion.
Which is what Kim gave you. Yep. Or if that has one.
Okay.
If the commission is seeking a recommendation for me, I would make the recommendation that we table the application, or the planning commission table the application. And part of the reasons I'm recommending that is, one, at this point, we have some incomplete waiver requests, which were voiced today, that the applicant's more than willing to submit, but we need those in writing to act on them. So it would be difficult to actually approve waiver requests that we don't have in hand. The other things that we think need to be clarified and worked out, there's significant work with Del Cora that needs to be finalized, and that's pretty significant. We do believe it can be solved, but we'd like to get it over a hump with that investigation with Del Cora. Some other things, too, that we're kind of waiting for are really formal comments from the Shade Tree Commission, which we, we addressed those comments. We'd like the applicant to address the Fire Marshal Office comments, which we do believe the applicant can comply with. There's things in Collier's letters in addition to stormwater, there's some things in the Planning and Zoning Department letter. And then, lastly, it would be a little awkward to approve this application today since we don't have the county comments in hand as well. So it's kind of like a sequencing thing. Not that we haven't done that before as a group, but it's not ideal. So I think, I think from speaking with the applicant's engineer, they're okay with us tabling the application, and, and part of that is their belief that they can comply with many of the things being asked for. So my recommendation today would be to, to table the application.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we table the application for today.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
So motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And just so we get those conditions, you know, just not doing it without them. And they're going to be, everything is going to be, you know.
Yeah, we'll be back in November. We, we can address the comments really quick. We'll be submitted for the November meeting. Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep. He's staying. I think he's going to mic it. No one wants to stay for the exciting director's report.
Director's report. We're here.
All right, you're, you're, thank you, that's all that matters. I know, I know.
All right, so we are now, the director's report. Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you. I, I have an update on a few things. One being the deadline reviews. As you remember, over the past couple of months, we've had these two projects lingering. One was at 611, 619 West 7th Street. The other one was at 3308 West 2nd Street. So as of today, as Susan knows, we did get an extension request on the 611 to 619 West 7th Street. That pushes out the review period that the planning commission is required to fulfill, and the council has to make some action on until the end of February next year. So that's taken care of. Unfortunately, I didn't get the extension request that I'd asked for today for 3308 West 2nd Street. That expires 11/12, which in fact is the date of our next planning commission meeting, and it's also the date of the first November council meeting. But the fact is, we'd have to get it on the council agenda for the 12th, and that's, would be November 4th. So as we have done in the past, what I'd like to do, and I recommend, is that we pass a motion, the planning commission passes a motion to deny this project, that 3308 West 2nd Street, unless an extension is brought to us before November 4th, which I'm actually expecting. Mike right out the door said I would have it in my hand, I just didn't have it today. So just as a action that we should just do to prevent an automatic approval of this project, we should, I believe, present this motion. So I will leave this. Do you have it? Oh, you got it? Okay.
All right.
He already knows. I mean, yeah, he knows.
Can I get a motion on 3308 West 2nd Street?
I move the planning commission recommend to city council the denial of the subdivision and land development application for 3308 West 2nd Street unless the applicant submits a written extension of the 90-day review period by November 4th, 2025. If no extensions are received by that date, the planning commission recommends that denial of the application be placed on the city council agenda for its November 12, 2025 meeting in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code.
Okay. It has been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstains? Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. The second item relates to what I gave you information on, and that is that we're moving through the process of the zoning amendment for Construction and Tradesmen Headquarters, which relates to my memo back to you in July 17th, which I think I emailed the copy to the group. And I think, I believe I emailed you the latest copy of the ordinance amendment, which again, is a simple amendment in the fact that we're going to not allow or permit Construction and Tradesmen Headquarters in our mixed-use districts, which are the C1, C2R district, as well as our CBD and waterfront district, the W1. We are going to allow them and permit them in our LIC. As we mentioned, we've been finding that, we've been getting a lot of these proposals for these types of uses, which were never defined before, but now we have a definition for them as part of our amendment. But they were being constructed in a way that, in my mind, and as a planning perspective, and I think there was an agreement on this commission, that they were not actually making improvements to our mixed-use districts, they were actually creating barriers in the sense that they were having screened fences. They had, we had pole barns being proposed, we had multiple access points in our mixed-use districts, which again, mixed-use is supposed to be for housing, first floor commercial, more traditional urban development, necessarily these construction headquarters, which were more industrial, and in our minds, more appropriate to the LIC, the light industrial, the MIC, the medium industrial, and the HIC, which is the high industrial, which there's few space for that, but there is plenty of space in our LIC and medium industrial districts, the MIC. So what I'd like to do today to move this process along, because we actually have a hearing scheduled on October twentieth, which is part of the approval process before we present to the council for a first reading on the amendment on October twentieth at three P.M. And I will send you this date again, so you're aware of it and have the ability to come if you are able to. This would allow us to, again, bring it in front of council on November, or October twenty-second, and then have their second reading on November twelfth. And we do think this is one of the most critical zoning amendments we can make today, because again, we're getting a number of these proposals that we cannot stop necessarily, or consider moving to different locations. And we'd like to be able to have some, to be proactive with them, is the best way I can put it. So what I'd like to do, just to formalize the planning commission's recommendation that the city council approve this, I've written out a model motion, which I'm not sure if you have it, or if you have it. It would literally just be this middle paragraph, if you're willing to support this, which based on my understanding, most of you or all of you do agree with this zoning amendment. This is kind of a learning curve for us too, because we're, we're trying to make sure we do these zoning amendments in a structured and way they're supposed to be done, through Kyle's help and other people's help. So we're, this is a good one to get through. Shop one, that was adopted. This is our second. We actually have a SADO amendment proposed. Bring to your attention in the very near future. So we're creating some momentum here. And again, today would be a formality just to make a motion to city council to approve that proposal. And I'm happy to take any questions, of course.
So, I have a question. So we're trying to make it so that these businesses, like landscaping, things like that, are not in the middle of a block of residential homes?
And that's exactly what we're seeing. Whether it's a concept plan that you haven't even seen, because it's only come across my desk and they haven't asked for any kind of formal submission, or you have seen them as sketch plans
Right.
in front of this planning commission. So, well, I think when the, the ordinance was originally writ, I think they foresaw what these places would look like, with these barrier fences, which are allowed to be eight feet tall in our C-one and C-two, or at least our C-two R district. And where the locations were, like Lamoken and West Third Street, where we're, that kind of area, especially West Third Street corridor, which in our minds should be more of a mixed-use district rather than industrial looking.
Paul, to add to that, I'm looking at how they look at sections of Chester and put things in the wrong areas, and then they'll put their headquarters in beautiful places. Because I was just really shocked to see some of these landscaping places with offices in very nice places. So if you're going to get a nice office place, think the same about Chester. Try to keep it looking nice. So I'm glad you're bringing this up.
Yeah, and again, I think what happens is we become the storage area for those
Yes.
other places. And that's, I really do not believe that was the intent of allowing this. I personally am against like limiting loose uses, but this one is a tough one to get around because it ends up being something I think the city does not want in these certain areas. It's not like we don't want businesses, it's in areas that we really feel like it's a detriment, so.
Makes sense. So, can I get a motion?
A move that the planning commission recommend to city council the approval of the proposed zoning amendment regulating construction company and tradesperson's headquarters as outlined in the staff report dated July seventeen, twenty twenty-five.
Second. It has been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Abstains? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay. And just a reminder that our next meeting, we're on a streak here. We have, is November twelfth, and I'm expecting stuff on the agenda for the twelfth, so. I will, Kim and I will let you know what that will be, but it could be Grace Homes or others.
Any projects need to be submitted by November fourth?
No, it's not November fourth.
To get on the agenda.
To get on the agenda. Annette, I can come up with a date. I'd be making it up in my head. It's like twenty-one days before the twelfth. But I'll let you know what that is. And I'll let applicants aware of that, too.
Okay.
All right.
So we know that the next planning commission meeting will be November the twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at two P.M. here in Chester City Hall Chamber. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a move that we adjourn and that the elevator be fixed by then.
Second. Okay. The meeting is adjourned. It is now three thirty-seven. Thank you, everyone.
Did he say it's fixed? No, he said he.
Yes.
That doesn't mean anything until it's fixed.
Right. All right.
But he, he had a good one. I want to ask about. Since you didn't call me, I thought.
Can you pass my suitcase, please?
And I thought about it after I got here.
I was trying to park my new car because I just decided, I'm tired of begging for a while. I got in my car, I said, I am going to drive this. I just take my time, so.
That's all you can do.
Yeah. So I'm parked out there. Am I annoying at times?
I use them for the year.
Well, I think I'm the longest person who's been here, so I've thrown away some. Because I've been here longer than anybody else. But these, I've just been, and I'm going to get a certain amount, and like you said, save them a certain amount of time and then they go.
No, tax or a seven years.
I meant the extra, that she has any more labels from me? Do I have to get her some more labels? This helps me have my own label on there.
Oh, you got, yeah, you got two sets. So you want to get, yes.